No, we're doing.
Okay.
It's now ten o'clock, so the floor is yours.
All right, I want to thank the Commission for their time this morning. I have just a handful of questions about permitting and the auditor suggests that I come and be forward you to get those answered, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, begin.
Sure. The crossing permit or the utility permit when we bore up under the road, how long is that good for?
One year, I believe.
One year?
It's good for one year. Well, typically, most all these permits are good for a year, but a lot of the service, you know, like a utility permit, most of the time chomping at the bit to get them done. So I guess I don't own one that doesn't get done right away, so.
Also notice you do have a, excuse me, a conditional use permit. Would that also be needed in conjunction with the utility permit and a road approach permit?
To my knowledge, we have the road approach permits specifically and the utility permits are usually just separately approved.
Right.
The conditional use permit is probably more for just the bulk of the project and the major things that your approaches and your utility permits are probably included in your conditional use permit, but you still have to permit for those small things still individually.
Right.
So even though you have that approach on your plan and it gets approved for a conditional use permit, you would still have to seek approval for those other permits.
Okay.
The road crossings and the approaches to be specified.
Any type of county drainage, maintain drainage, is there a permit for us to bore up under that or process or?
To my knowledge, the Water Board would probably handle that and then they're probably most likely going to fall back to the, probably to the State Water Commission on, because I know the State Water Commission has specific permits and the County Water Board probably administers them through that, so you'd probably have to seek out the County Water Board for that.
Do you have any floodplain permits? I'm guessing wetlands? Well, we can't go through a wetland, but.
Right. I would say mapping for that, the floodplain specifically like for Beaver Creek is usually administered to the city of Linton, so you'd probably have to get floodplain information for that if you're close to the city of Linton. Anything outside of that would probably be again the Emmens County Water Board or probably NRCS for wetlands information and floodplanes, but let's say the Water Board would be your first start with that and point you in the direction you need for that.
Okay. Are there any noise ordinances, say around the area of construction for, I guess maybe certain times of days during the day, like when it gets stark, obviously, we're going to stop, but is there any set time or any noise ordinances within X amount of feet of someone's house or?
I don't know of anything specifically, I mean, we could probably do it if it's included in the conditional use permit or not, if that's something, but it's at the top of my head now.
And a while back, you said you were going to be using possibly walled engineering. Have you all made a decision on that? So we can get with engineering company and?
Well, we haven't received a permit from you yet, so we haven't hired an engineer to administer the projects.
Okay, gotcha.
Let's say the likelihood of wall engineering would be good just because that's who we work with, but that's not even said in the statement.
And last question is, I know we brought up the discussion of not wanting us to use casing us, we don't want to use casing to go up under the road. Have you all discussed that or broke that subject since then?
I guess I haven't got a defined answer from anybody that, you know, as far as being an expert on that, no, I haven't really, it's my opinion, I don't think any else has really depended on.
I will say that since our last meeting, our chairman requested that we do some homework, if I stated that correctly.
Yeah.
So I did, I made calls to seventeen counties in South Dakota in which this project is going through and one county in particular stated that the company is not really fond of encasements, they frown on that, and that they'll do anything to avoid encasements because that's not what they want to do. Other than that, I'll tell you what, guys, we are as much ahead of this game as anybody. South Dakota, the auditors that I talked to, they're all taking a wait-and-see approach and they're not, not really moving on anything and there were some moratoriums in some counties, but overall, these counties haven't really done, I think we are probably more active here than what I heard in all those counties in South Dakota. And, but I did, I did make note of that, that encasement is just something this company is not fond of, so it's something we should be probably discussing more in the future.
So why is it, why don't you want encasements?
That's the way they used to do it years ago, but now what happens is you have these vent pipes that come up when you have the casing on each side of the easement. Water gets down in there, corrosion, we can't get live, real-time data out of that area, so that can cause a delay if something should happen. And those are the main ones and the state is not requiring it and I do have some documentation I can do to back up, you know, excuse me, I lost train of thought, to back up our reasoning behind not doing it.
I guess one thing that I'd like to request though is actually, I'd like a map. I mean, the maps that we've got are all been these eight and a half by elevens, all they do is show Emmens County with a red line going through it, I would like to see something, you know what?
Sure.
You know, I mean, to next air's credit, when we had the wind tower projects, I mean, they brought in, it was twenty-four by thirty-six, maybe even bigger, they had residences, they had sections, township ranges, trapped owners, I mean, they had red lines where they're, you know, off citing the distance from the residences, all those things.
Sure.
It just makes it a lot easier, you know, I know you probably maybe don't have something specific maybe now, maybe that's going to come with a permit, but it would be, that's one question that I have is I don't honestly really know exactly where it's going because all I've seen is just a red line throughout Emmens County, so.
Absolutely, I do not have access to that, I can send in a request, give me about a week, I'll email.
That'd be fine, but it would be, it would be nice to even just get paper copy because we don't have the ability to print out like a twenty-four by thirty, we don't have, we don't have like an engineer scale plotter here or anything like that, so.
You know what, I'm going to be back on November first to get the quarterly project update.
Sure.
Bring them in.
That would be, I think that would be fine, but it would be nice to get a look at a map that's a little more detailed at least for our specific use and then the other question is, do you have any kind of a estimated timetable on when you're going to be applying for a permit or?
Not as of yet.
Okay.
They have been applying for permits across the scope of the project in different states, I do not know when here. I know they are working on some, I don't know for what county. So that's done at corporate, it gets sent down to me and then I distribute them out.
And as far as getting access to land, is that still, are you still in that process where you're still surveying and doing things like that? Because I know, I know I've gotten several calls from people that are, you know, they're getting pushed through the legal process to grant land access, so is that coming to an end or are you still working on it, is it the beginning stages?
The last meeting I heard, I believe all of those letters have been sent out.
Okay.
So they are working through that process.
And then as far as the survey is going, you guys are aware of like the state procedures and the legal way of recording these easements and all that, that's all getting properly done, that way you?
Yes, it will be, you bet. And by law, they have to contract with a registered land surveyor in North Dakota, so I don't know what process they're in of doing that as of yet, if they already have someone or if they're looking for someone. But any type of stamped label authorized plat has to be stamped by North Dakota.
Okay.
Land surveyor.
That's all the questions I have, I guess.
And back to the South Dakota, pretty much across the scope, we're, even in North Dakota, we're pretty much the same way as South Dakota, but we still have guys down there like me that come out and we're still getting information, so that process is going on in South Dakota, North Dakota, all the states. So anyway, just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Chairman, when I spoke to the auditors in South Dakota, one of the specific questions I asked was, you know, have they taken any action on setbacks from farmsteads, whether they were active farmsteads or isolated farmsteads and some of them said they were discussing it, of course, they all have zoning boards that they would turn it over to, you know, where we don't have that, but most of them were not sure what they wanted to do, some had talked about a mile to two-mile approach, but they, nothing was adopted yet at that time. And then the other question I asked them all was about eminent domain, are they taking any action on eminent domain or where they stand on it and none of them really had taken any action only yet in South Dakota, so.
Yeah, well, like I said, with my research, it seems the majority of the setbacks, if there are any, that it seems like if any counties are going, it seems to be a mile is a pretty common setback. I think that's hit and miss across the board because there's other counties like us that have never really had a project like this, so they don't really have a setback that pertains to it, so that'll probably be a part of our ongoing discussions too, as well as the casing is what we're going to settle on as a setback. It would be nice to have that map to help to at least know, you know, if our setbacks are, you know, maybe they're following exactly what we would be doing on that anyway, if not, it's hard to know, work with any kind of setback when you have no idea exactly where it's going, so.
Sure.
I think that map would be very helpful in us.
Absolutely.
With our discussions on how we want to handle it too.
Sure. I can bring those next time, next month.
Okay, yeah, it'd be nice to have something because like I said, I know we don't have any big plotter or anything, so.
Can you check on a GIS shapefile?
Sure.
I had sent an email a couple of months ago, still nothing on yet, so that way we can overlay it with our parcel layer and then know exact what landowners might be affected.
Yeah, absolutely, I can do that.
That would also be appreciated.
Yes.
Is there any more questions for Joey? You have any more questions for us?
No, sir.
Okay, well, then I believe we're done here. Okay, thank you. We're a little out of schedule with Clay, since you're here, your folks are here, if you want to start.
I do have some handouts.
Sure.
For you guys.
Josh, one? Floor is yours, Clay, whenever you want to begin.
Thank you.
So good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, good to see you guys again, thank you for the time, it's been a while. I would like to introduce two colleagues of mine as well, they're here, Sarah Montone and I think you guys are familiar with Jacque Akers when we permitted the Emmens Logan Wind Project. So I'm here to discuss with you guys this morning about a potential battery storage project located near our Emmens Logan Wind Project as well. So I'd just like to talk about a little bit why the need for a battery storage project. The benefits of an energy storage deliver several advantages to the power grid as it can store electricity and deliver it at a later, more appropriate time and it requires a mount to either grid operators or to our customers. You guys know that we have, you know, the Emmens Logan Wind Project here operating, the customer is Montana, the customer is Craig River Energy, is connected to the Montana and the, you know, Montana Dakota Utilities Power System. There has been some congestion and reliability concern with that project due to network upgrades that are further down the line. So battery storage kind of helps increase the grid reliability, it kind of smooths out the fluctuations in the frequency and the voltage, it reduces energy losses and waste, it avoids the need for some system upgrade, which I think you guys remember that we were developing the wind project at three hundred megawatts. We had the downside to two hundred megawatts on the 115 KB side due to some serious upgrades and I think we presented it to you guys during our time as well. So that's kind of just battery storage project, if it continues to move forward, it's going to help smooth out some of that concern as well. It also reduces the frequency of unexpected rolling blackouts as well, so. So what is a battery storage? So on page three of your presentation, it kind of shows what a battery storage is made up of. It's made up of several battery cells that are probably the size of a laptop or, you know, iPhone or something like that, and they're connected to your form battery modules, which is that little second diagram there in your handout, which is loaded into battery racks and then the battery containers kind of look like storage containers, I don't know if you guys are familiar with those, have you seen something like that?
Oh, yeah, everybody hates them.
So that's kind of what a battery storage project would look like. I'm going to pause there just for a minute to see if you guys have any questions on this. Now, I'm going to pause as well to say that we're still, the location is still being defined, it's normally we would like to put these facilities that are close by a collector substation, so we're still working on finalizing that location, so I can't provide that with you today. This battery storage project is a very early-stage project, we're not sure if it's going to go forward, but I just wanted to get in front of you guys and tell you a little bit about it in case you heard about it on the street before, you know, before you heard about it from someplace else, so.
How safe are these battery packs?
Sorry?
How safe are these packs?
Well, they're, they're very safe, actually, you know, we've had, we have probably seven hundred megawatts of battery storage already installed throughout the country on several locations. There's a state-of-the-art fire system, if that's what you're concerned about as well, I know there's a lot of stuff out there on the internet and been talking about, about fire hazards. These battery storage containers are, have an HVAC, you know, HVAC system in it, they have a state-of-the-art fire suppression system, they're monitored 24/7 by our facilities in Florida and by our local operations group as well, in case there's an issue.
So is this pretty new?
The technology is fairly new within the last few years and the technology continues to evolve, to improve, both with storage and safety concerns.
Do you have any in North Dakota right now?
We have no facilities in North Dakota currently, this will be the first. This will be the first in North Dakota with a battery storage underneath a wind project. In some locations around the country, we have standalone battery storage projects, some of them are connected to an existing solar facility as well.
So how close do you guys be to the substation?
We like it fairly close because, you know, it limits the length of, you know, transmission cable to connect to it and it also eliminates some of the losses as well, electrical losses.
I guess I just worry about explosion or something.
I'm sorry?
Explosion or something, I mean, risk of that or?
Well, it's like I said, there's a state-of-the-art fire suppression system that is installed in the, in the container.
So basically, each one of these shipping containers, for lack of a better word, is going to be, like you said, it's going to be a standalone fire suppression system, HVAC system for cooling and heating, so mostly cooling probably, but.
Mostly cooling, because the battery.
Oh, you're using some heat too, so.
Yeah, you got to have a battery to heat up, right?
Right, so that means it's basically a self-contained unit, then you probably just have multiple containers to fit your needs, I'm assuming that.
Yeah, we're planning on maybe a hundred to a hundred and twenty megawatt facility, so we're looking at, that would take up maybe about ten to twelve acres of land with your battery facilities, so.
So how many containers is that?
I'm sorry?
How many containers is that?
Not sure yet, depends on the technology that we use. We were looking at, you know, potentially doing this maybe by 2024. Now, I don't think you guys currently have anything in your zoning order or zoning permit, but I'm sure there's some type of traditional use permit that would have to go through you guys, right?
Yeah, I imagine this go through our typical conditional use permit, I mean, this is the first one in North Dakota, we're probably a little behind the times as well, so.
Yeah, let's say why, you know, the PSC doesn't really have any legislation or rules in place for battery storage, but I'm sure they're going to talk about it this next legislative session or something.
So where, where do you have some of these?
I'm sorry?
What part of the country do you have some of these?
Mainly in the, if you look at, I think there's a map that I.
Five pages of map?
Yep, that shows storage facilities all around the country. A lot in the south, southeast part of the country, a couple up in the northeast, somehow in California.
So Clay, how's this being funded?
How it be funded?
How's this being funded?
Well, we, we put out the capital expense for this.
Now, where's the money coming from?
Well, it'll be from the customer.
Yeah.
The customer will actually pay for it, the customer, we're talking to the customer, which is Craig River Energy, right? Because it's going to help them with their congestion.
This is no way tied to the infrastructure bill that passed with our wonderful government regarding the hundred million for climate?
Well, there is some particular.
Of course, I've been preaching that to this board and everyone else for the longest time, that this isn't going to go away. People are going to come up with ideas and plans and here we are, we've got another one.
Yeah.
You know, it just never ends, you guys. Again, this is all on the taxpayers' backs in the country, I'm not just talking here, but this is what happens when we have a government that puts money out there and it's free-for-all to grab and you guys are all in line and I'm not just picking on you, Clay, because we just had one in here that's doing the same thing and we're going to have another five or six in the future coming in here with ideas, new inventions, new plans, and it's all about this money that's out there that they all want to get their hands on. And I just don't know when this is going to end. It's ridiculous, you guys come in there and you have all these plans and none of it is to the benefit of anyone here, it's to the benefit of you guys and your companies.
Well, this is actually going to benefit the, the system that's out there right now, the wind farm, right, it's going to, you're talking to the customer who is Craig River Energy, right, there are some issues there with the tail man and congestion, this is going to help solve some of that problem.
Yeah, I know how that, I know how that goes, I, I'm seeing it more and more and I'm frustrated, I'm not going to deny that, today I'm a little frustrated, but I watch the news and I see what's going on and it's like this is just, it's a free-for-all, it's a money grab for everybody that can get in line and the rest of us honest, hard-working people have to pay for all that.
I understand your concern, but, you know, we were doing battery storage projects long before this, our rate bill got passed, so it's not something that just started just because of that bill being passed, we were already into, we were already into business and providing that, this type of technology to places and companies and customers that wanted it.
So what are the benefits to our taxpayers in this county for that?
Well, I'm not sure of the tax benefits yet, I haven't done that analysis yet, but I will provide it going forward. There is some more tax benefits to, to the county as well.
Why are you, why are you looking at this area?
Well, this particular project, because of the congestion and some of the reliability issues on the grid, on the grid, you guys know it's not a secret, right? Some of the grid up in this part of the country is very constrained, very congested, so this is going to help smooth out some of that in this particular area on that, on that particular interconnection.
So would this be similar to like your substations where you're probably purchasing property?
Yes.
So it would be, and then most likely it's going to be adjacent to the substation as close as possible.
That would be ideal, yeah, it would be ideal.
Because I mean, even your picture here basically tries to show like it's on the same site as the substation, basically, so.
Correct, yeah.
So you're most likely looking at probably along Highway eighty-three or out on the county line or the other substations?
Well, probably closer to the existing substation, the two thirty substation that's out in the middle of the project. If you follow this substation here, that's the hundred megawatt that we did not build, that was up north of Michigan.
Yeah.
Yeah. But MDU actually built that substation out, they operated it.
You're talking about the one you had right along Highway eighty-three down our side?
Yeah.
Let's say if you, I mean, just if you're going to talk about ideal location, what you're talking about on the county line, just first location being a little more out in the open would probably be more ideal than right along Highway eighty-three.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. Now, I'll provide you guys updates as we move forward, I mean, like I said, I mean, you know, the chances are this project going forward is, you know, probably fifty-fifty at this point, but I just wanted to get in front of you guys and make sure you're aware of what's happening.
Basically, they had no containers, but they'd also be fenced out too.
I'm sorry?
They'd also have a fence around them and everything?
Yeah, they would be enclosed, yeah, because it's a, yeah, just like the substation that's out there.
Well, thanks for bringing it to us anyway, instead of us having to find out the hardware of some of these other projects.
Sure, I'm just trying to avoid a whole, oh.
Hey, well, that's, that's appreciated, so, is there any more questions for Clay? Next there. If not, then that's all we got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, coming in Clay. We could, can we do the appraisal of Tommy property, Mark?
Could we do that?
Okay. So we just have one sheet here, looks like four, three properties?
Yes, there's, there's three properties that are linked with other taxes that will, if they don't pay them by the third Tuesday in the calendar reports, we hold that sale here at two o'clock.
Okay.
And so I need to know what you, what the bid's out at, so you had, you guys have to tell me how much you want me to start to open a bid off the minimum price. The first one here that she has is down in Old Town, Sherry McKee, it's just an empty lot. And we have that on the tax, on last year's margin liquid list, you guys had a price of two thousand dollars and I didn't get any bids or anything on it last year.
The two thousand basically would just cover the taxes.
Right, right, Clay, it's just a, looks like all prices pretty much are just recommended over the tax of two.
Well, you know that law changed now where if you, you sell a property and you have some extra funds left over after you put it towards the taxes, that has to be turned over on the bank property, where we can no longer keep any of that fund. The owner, you have to send a, I have to send a letter to the owner because I believe ninety days to kind of claim the extra money, because he doesn't get it. And if the owner doesn't, then it gets turned over to the unclaimed property.
So it'd be easier for you if they just set the price of the taxes due?
Yeah.
Well, one of them is owned by a county commissioner, if you care to explain.
Well, it's just something I inherited when I wrote that and it just, you know.
You don't want it?
I don't really want it, you know.
Okay.
I mean, maybe I'll, maybe I could pay the tax for another year and still try to get rid of it, but.
So basically, you inherited it, you don't really want it, so that's why it's on there? These notices aren't laying on the floorboard, you pick up or nothing like that or you're on your desk?
Well, you got all your mail, right?
Yep.
Okay. So want to dig in up on the?
This first one, this, this one lot here in Linton State, that Terry did beat, we, we see, we acquired that in 2020.
Twenty twenty?
Yeah. And the other two, we just acquired them this year.
Oh, just acquired.
The city has no interest in it at all or?
No, and it's, I think it's, if you want to bring it up, if you can bring it up, I think this house is, it's an extra block, it's shades into this house.
That must be over, Hampton's over there.
That almost has to be in some kind of flood.
Well, it has to be.
So maybe not, I mean, it has to be.
That's what I'm thinking it is, yeah.
So that's gotta be on the west end of Sampson.
It's because Sampson's on that street there, so it's gotta be something like that.
Yeah, please bring it in.
There you go, yeah, there's the flood now.
Yeah.
So it's a, yeah.
Yeah.
Corner of Sampson, it says. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a little area. So we could, I mean, it goes to claims, what do they do then?
Any extra money, just want to go any extra to, I think.
Nobody buys it, but basically it's, it's ours almost and nobody takes it, so.
Somebody.
Right. Typically, in those situations, usually the city would take it for a dollar, but in that case, I don't know, they must not seem to be interested.
I asked him, I think, last year and he said he wasn't interested.
I do know the sewer for the house in the north of it runs through that property, because I, I had to dig that up in the street like two years ago, so that's one hang up if you're set, or if you have your neighbor's sewer running through it, so that's, might be a downfall.
I recommend that you just keep it at the two thousand.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it seems to me that you basically just round it up to the nearest hundred, like this, this other taxes do is.
Just click you.
Yeah, I mean, seventeen hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-two cents, we're asking eighteen hundred. You're basically asking just for the taxes. But I'd say at this point, you might realize we're not changing unless, the only change I would have would be if the city was interested. Like we said before, we're always willing to work with them, but if they're not interested, then I guess.
I could ask them again, just.
Or even like this other one with the city of Strasburg, if they're interested in any of these properties, I mean. So let them go back to the cities for a dollar and let them decide if they wanna give them their talents. If they don't want them, then I guess we'll have to tell them.
Well, Joe, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but that first one in Linton here, because we acquired it two years ago, that one we could sell to the city before the auction. But the ones that we acquired this year, you have to put it through the auction first to let the public.
Right, I believe that's correct.
Purchase it, am I wrong on that?
I believe that's correct, but I, I don't think you're gonna have any issue with somebody purchasing that lot.
But you have to operate at a public sale first before you can let the city purchase it for a dollar or whatever, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, let's follow the proper procedures, let's find, but it's, I would say, I guess my recommendation is just keep the recommended sale prices for now, since that would recover the taxes of the recent, go from there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Any other disagreements?
On all three of them, just keep the recommended?
That one in Strasburg got to pay the taxes, one they're pretending to do it in.
You can't pay the nineteen taxes anymore because it's after October first. Now you have to pay all three years. We will take that check from you.
Well, let it go up to the public, they'll pay it on it, fine. Because I don't, I don't have any use for it.
So you want, are you gonna get a motion for that, Aaron?
Yeah, well, that's just for minutes sake, let's, I'll entertain a motion to help to change the sale prices or keep them as recommended.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to leave the recommended sale prices on all three lots.
Commissioner Hall makes a motion to retain the recommended sale prices on all three of these delinquent lots that are second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner White. Is there any more discussion on these county properties here? Not hearing any others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So we can continue with building permits till eleven o'clock or until Acacia comes in. There were building permit for O'Brien and Brenda Schaffner to erect a forty dot forty-eight garage in the west half, the northwest quarter, to the northeast quarter, to the southeast quarter, and the southeast quarter. Section eight, township one thirty, range seventy-nine. Down I cattail, they started, they reported the concrete. There you go. Subdocks are good, but there's another new board. Well, I'd say we'll probably stick to the ruling on that.
You'll say the fine, right?
Twice the building permit fee was the, was the fine for starting a lot of permits, so. Unless I'm mistaken.
I think that's what it was.
Pardon me?
Twice, uh, twice the fee, right?
Right, yeah, the question.
Correct.
Is that what you paid Josh?
Uh, it's paid the, I don't know, Denise Haddles though. I think it's, I think they just paid the one, fifty dollars so far. So you should wait until you're guys approval.
Well, it says here the fee was fifty dollars and paid on the front page.
Yep. So it would be a hundred bucks, right?
So you have a penalty, would be an additional fifty dollars, so.
Not too far enough.
Well, I mean, if it fits, and everything fits, or, I mean, you know, at the same time, it's.
I think you submitted that building permit request like the day after the last one's meeting.
Well, it looks like the day was ninety-nine, Tony, too, so, yeah.
It's kinda tough to blame too much, you gotta get the.
Well, they didn't have a building permit though, and then that's the defining line, so it's tough to say. I mean, if it would've been in the wrong spot, now we'd be in, put a little pickle, so. Everything seems to check out with the building permit, so motion to approve, table or deny the building permit for O'Brien and Brenda Schaffner? Well, we gotta do something, guys, we're not gonna approve it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it, provided they pay the additional fine.
Commissioner White makes a motion to approve building permit with contingency that they pay the additional fifty dollar penalty.
Okay, that's on the back. Okay, that's one, I couldn't tell, it's like, oh, there it is, fifty feet, fifty feet off the road then.
So we have a motion to approve the building permit with contingency of the fifty dollar, additional fifty dollar penalty for beginning without a permit, so they're seconded.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Everly. Is there any more discussion on building permit for O'Brien and Brenda Schaffner? Not hearing any others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Permit approved with contingency of a fifty dollar penalty. I see Acacia's here, so once we can pause and take you guys with your quarterly report, you're ready.
Hi. Pass these to you guys, and then pass them to me. Thank you. And then, um, Aaron, he actually has a scholarship forms for you.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then these are the invites for fall awards, so your names are on each of those.
Yep.
So, you wanna pass those to Commissioner Eberlin? Is that everything?
I think so, okay.
Thank you.
Kinda came with a little bit of mail.
We did.
This one goes to Aaron too, because it says chairman.
Yeah.
That goes to Aaron also. It's got my name on it, but it says chairman.
Oh, that's Connie maybe using her label or something. Yeah, so that would go.
Are there any additional?
Oh, that's your scholarship there.
The other thing's a follow awards invite to the commission.
Yep. Yep.
Or one's a certificate.
I got applications and I got folders.
So you, you.
Yeah, they were, they were liner name.
Yeah. Connie maybe just put the, used an old label, so that one's probably yours.
Yeah, that one's probably yours. She just used an old label. I, she must've just used an old label, I don't know. Sorry, I'm not sure.
Well, I'll check and see.
You all got the same thing, I, I'm not sure. You're all invited, yes, to our fall awards.
One of yours?
Okay, so we're just gonna do our quarterly narrative quick, so we just, um, you all have this little publication in front of you. It's just some different highlights, um, of things that we've had going on this last quarter. Obviously, achievement days, um, was a big thing. We kicked off the last quarter with our achievement days. Um, had a great time, good, good turnout, lots of fun projects. Watching the kids show their exhibits is always a good time. Um, and then from there, we headed to state fair. And, um, our projects, our static projects did really well at the state fair, so was really proud of, um, our, our kids. And, um, J.C. actually took state champion in poles? Nope. Rail racing, um, J.C. Richter. So we even had a state champion on the horse side of things, so that was kinda fun and we're proud of those kids and all their hard work. Um, do you wanna kinda talk about some of the things you've been working on?
Yeah, so then it kind of goes into some of the things that I've been up to this quarter. So, um, getting back from maternity leave, I jumped right in with the achievement days and then right into our plot tour that we do every year at the Tri-County Plot Tour site, which is seven miles west of Weshick. And so it was a great time. We had really good attendance from Emmons County, um, folks. We had over fifty percent of the participants at the program were from Emmons County, so that was kind of a woo-hoo, like a great time. And, um, Commissioner Everly was able to be there, so I really appreciate you coming out to see the plot and, um, that was really fun to have you there. So we had some good food, had some good discussions about the research that are going on out there. So, um, I just encourage you to read about all of the different trials that we had there. And then I, um, did some coffee talks this fall, which is a kind of a different style of programming from what we're traditionally, um, we, what we've done in the office. So it was more informal, it gave producers the opportunity to come and just have a conversation with myself and a couple of specialists that I brought down from one of our local REC's. And so I got a lot of positive feedback that they really liked the informal atmosphere of the program. Lot less presentations, it was just a lot easier to engage with the staff that I had there. And so I will plan to keep doing those types of programs, um, just to let everybody feel comfortable in the environment that we're trying to do our programming in so that we can actually make a really powerful impact for those, um, producers that come. And we also were able to collaborate with, um, Farm Service Agency and RCS staff to come in and also be able to have them available for producers to ask questions of them. So that was really great to include those folks. And then I got to do a little state obligation and go to Big Iron to help man the NDSU extension booth, so I got to see a few, um, people, producers from the Tri-County area and get to answer their questions there and do a lot of networking, um, on behalf of NDSU Extension. And then, of course, with the drought, um, ramping up again this fall, lots of questions about drought concerns that have been coming in. Lot of questions about, you know, grazing, stubble, and nitrate problems and water quality issues again. Um, and then been doing some crop scouting, just trying to, um, keep on track of where our crops are at, which I think, um, a lot of our soybeans are coming off the fields now, so that's been kind of great to see. And so far, I've been hearing, you know, guys are getting, you know, adequate to marginal yields, just depending on how the summer went for them. They got some rains throughout the latter part of the year, grasshoppers, all that fun stuff, and if they were able to reach maturity with the late planting date. So, um, just been working and talking with producers and, um, I guess doing all the fun things. So I'll let Acacia talk about some of the stuff she's been up to.
Yeah, we were kinda running our room, so just a few highlights. Um, Monica McConkey was the mental health professional we brought back, or brought into Emmons County this spring to do some programming. I was asked by the Lynton Public School to work with them for our back-to-school event, so we brought her back. Um, she did a session with the teachers and staff at, um, the Lynton Public School. In addition, she did another parent session. It was well received, lots of, um, good comments, um, people want more, they, they like that kind of programming. And they especially enjoy the message that she shares, so that was great. Um, one of the things I'm working on is community impressions. Um, and so that's kind of a, um, neat program. I've been asked to, um, be on that with, um, other folks from Lynton. And so we have a community, um, that we visited and gave them a lot of feedback, and then that community will give us the feedback. And hopefully, it'll improve, um, maybe some of the things that our communities do to people that are traveling through. Busy time of year with food preservation, um, so been answering questions from everything, from people preserving their canned chicken to making jelly. So, um, I always get some interesting questions for sure on that. We had, um, an Emmons County Advisory Board meeting actually last week. We had actually a small turnout, but we had fabulous discussion, so we took away, um, some awesome feedback from folks that attended that meeting. And so we're excited to be able to implement some of that stuff or, or, um, work on some things collaboratively with some of those folks. We had a legislative update a couple weeks ago. Um, we're in a new legislative district, so that was interesting for us because we got to meet a lot of other legislators that we, I, I hadn't met before. Because usually we were in District twenty-eight, so we were kind of, um, with different ones. So we, we met some new faces and networked and, um, it's always fun getting to share the work we do with folks that, um, at the legislature. So, kinda, some of the things in a nutshell, it's been a busy quarter, next quarter, this is, or this current quarter, they're all busy. Just some things on the back, some upcoming events. Um, yesterday, I did twenty-sixty-five, which was Medicare, um, basics program, and that was, uh, good. I have a shotgun instructor training coming up tomorrow to get some, um, more four-H shotgun instructors certified. And we just, yeah, some of the stuff, I have a breast cancer event coming up in October. You're all invited to four-H Fall Awards. Um, it's also kinda conference season, so we have some stuff. And Emily's got a.
Yep, I have a livestock, uh, economics production meeting coming up here on November ninth, and we're actually going to host the program in Hazelton. Um, and kind of the reason being, there is an absence right now in the Tri-County area for, um, an extension agent and the A and R side. So we're, um, taking that into consideration with the location so that we can maybe get some different people from close by to come and take part in our meeting. So we're gonna do it in Hazelton, and, um, it's going to get started at ten o'clock in the morning. So be on the lookout for flyers and other mailings coming out in the email and potentially a card copy mailing if we can work with the soil conservation district on that, so. I guess, any, any questions?
Do you have any help with Logan County right now at all, or?
Well, as far as the absence right now in Logan County, we do, um, get, um, some phone calls that come in. But I haven't had to like go and physically look at anything yet in Logan County, but we have been helping out the current FCW agent, um, answer some phone calls and I've been getting.
They're hiring for that position?
They are hiring, so hopefully, I think they're starting screening at the end of the month here, so hopefully that position will fill soon. But, yeah, myself and the McIntosh, a McIntosh County agent have been just trying to help field some calls if we can, so.
So how many of these coffee talk places did you go to? I mean, how many?
We had two locations. So we had the one in Linton, and then we actually did one in Strasburg as well. And we had did the one in Strasburg at the Blue Room. And so, um, if we get good, um, we've gotten really good feedback from that program. So, I mean, I hope to continue to do programming like that in some of the other communities in Emmons County. And so I hope to do one again in Strasburg and do one here hopefully in Linton, and then maybe start to try to fit one in in Hazelton too. Just kind of depends on how I can get it all scheduled out, so.
Okay, good talk. Any other questions for extension? That's all we have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, you're up next. When are you ready, Jeff?
Okay, just my quarterly report. Nothing spectacular going on.
Nothing spectacular going on. Got my fall conference coming up this month, seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth. And I'll be doing that virtually again on a computer. So I won't be actually attending the conference. It'll be in this month.
Doesn't look like anything's really any different from the usual it looks like. Anything else going on or needs changing?
You know, there's been some talk about the PAC Act that, you know, that Congress passed. You know, that's the new, with the burn pit, the new diseases that's coming out. There's a lot of commercials on TV about. V A doesn't know how they're going to handle them yet, so that's fairly new. Veterans can file claims if they want, but they're going to be helped because the V A doesn't. It's often new. They don't know how they're going to handle them yet. So, you know, even the commercials on television, they're not going to be handled yet because the V A doesn't know how they're going to be able to handle them yet. So that's something that came out. That's pretty new.
Anytime somebody goes to the medical care or something, they got to call you and inform you, or how does that work?
How's that now?
Anytime somebody has to go to see a doctor or a V A clinic or something, do they got to contact? Because I see healthcare visits here.
Ah, no. Well, the healthcare visits, you know, sometimes they come in to me and they've got questions on medical, you know, they deal with their medical issues.
But they don't have to contact Emmons County if they're going to see the doctors or something, is that right?
No, most of the time, their doctor visits are set up, you know, between them and their doctors. But if they've got questions on their medical, you know, that deal with their doctors, you know, sometimes issues come up and then they come to me and I help and deal with them. That's when the medical stuff comes up. And sometimes, you know, I've got a doctor in this morning with travel problems, getting his travel paid. You know, for a court.
Yeah, when they drive the tram to some of them, we got to fill out a V A form.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we turn.
He's got to fill out, they got to fill out to get travel paid for going to his appointments.
Right.
And he didn't know how to get, he didn't know how he's going to get the travel paid because it's for, it's not travel paid to the V A clinic. It's for travel paid at Sanford to see a doctor there, but it's a V A-approved doctor visit. And he wasn't sure how to do that. So then he came in and comes in to me. You know, that kind of stuff that comes up.
Any other questions for Jeff? Jeff, you have any questions for us?
No.
Okay. Well, I'd say this has concluded. We'll do something else. All right.
Okay.
Thanks for coming in, Jeff. Do you know about, at eleven-ten, we're going to have a phone call with Dennis Beck and with Tammy Iwok. I'm doing a wall of honor for the county courtrooms. So. We'll move on to some more building permits. So we have a building permit for Chris Heisinger to erect a thirty-six by forty-four garage on Rice Lake, south of subdivision, south subdivision, two, lot three, four. All right, setbacks are good. How are they prepped for the concrete?
You can't do that close to the water, huh?
It looks, it looks close to it right on the edge, but...
Can be deceiving on some of them lots the elevation to pass the water. There's some spots out there where twenty feet out of the water comes up six feet, you know, so it might be deceiving on that.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Everly to approve the building permit for Chris Heisinger. We're second to that. Seconded by Commissioner Culver. Is there any more discussion? I'd like to see the... I didn't mean to rush you.
No.
Everything checks out with you, Josh, as far as that?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve a building permit for Chris Heisinger. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Building permit approved. So a building permit for Leonard Better to erect two grain bins southwest quarter, section twenty-two, township one thirty-three, range seventy-four.
The grain bins way out there, is there any issue?
Looks like it's well off.
Yes, well.
Section, really, looks like it's...
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Whitehead to approve the construction of grain bins for Leonard Better.
Okay.
Seconded by Commissioner Holm. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Permit approved. So a building permit for Jordan Samantha Rose to erect a thirty-by-forty garage southwest quarter, less two-point-six-four acres. Section twenty-seven, township one thirty-three, range seventy-four. Julie, you want to hand me that other building permit?
I'll make a motion to approve that also.
Everything checks out, Josh?
It's good.
Looks good. So we have a motion by Commissioner Whitehead to approve a building permit for Jordan Samantha Rose. They're second to that. Seconded by Commissioner Everly. Is there any more discussion on building permit for Jordan Samantha Rose? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Permit approved. Building permit for Schick Land LLC to erect two fifty-five thousand bushel grain bins on ten acres in southwest quarter, section twenty-three, township one thirty-five, range seventy-six, which I believe is the same plot as the Orthmore plot we approved earlier. Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Motion by Commissioner Culver to approve a building permit for Schick LLC to build two grain bins on the site. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Whitehead. Is there any more discussion? Building permit for Schick Land LLC. Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Permit approved. We have a renewal for a building permit for Paul A. Schneider to add a ten-by-twenty-four addition on the existing home of Lot One, Block One, section twelve, township one thirty-six, range seventy-nine. I believe this is just something we approved previously and he just did not get it done in time, so I had to renew.
So basically, the same thing.
Yeah, same thing. Everything still looks good. Yeah. Entertaining a motion to approve, case of nine.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Holm to approve the building permit for Paul A. Schneider. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Commissioner Culver. Is there any more discussion on the reapplication for building permit for Paul Schneider? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Permit approved. Building permit for S B A Network Services LLC to add new antennas to an existing telecom tower on section thirty-two, township one thirty-three, range seventy-eight. So they're just adding to the existing tower that's already there?
I'll make a motion.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Everly to approve the permit for S B A Network Services to add additional antennas to an existing telecom tower. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
David did.
David did.
Seconded by Commissioner Culver. Any more discussion on the building permit for S B A Network Services? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Permit approved. Building permit for Bruce and Dixie Bosch to move a twenty-eight-by-fifty-six manufactured home on Lot Seventeen, Rice Lake subdivision, north half of section four, township one twenty-nine, range seventy-seven. Subbacks are good. Nothing's been started.
Is this from North Side or South Side?
It should be the South Side.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Holm to approve a building permit. Seconded by Commissioner Everly. Is there any more discussion on the building permit for Bruce and Dixie Bosch? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Permit approved. Building permit for Donald Larson to erect a forty-eight-by-ninety-six coal mine on part of the southeast quarter of section thirty-two, township one thirty, range seventy-seven.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
That must be on the barnyard.
Yep, it's in the barn.
Yeah. Motion by Commissioner Whitehead to approve building permit for Donald Larson. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Everly. Is there any more discussion on building permit for Donald Larson? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Permit approved. Wait about five minutes until, are they calling us or are we calling them?
I told them to call my office and the girls will send them.
Okay. Maybe they want to take a little rest or anything while you're there. Five minutes. Cruising for another short meeting could end up in the hearing. Yeah?
Erica, you can go to your room and then come back.
Well, it depends what happens. I don't know. The afternoon session takes a mind of its own, so... We might not even have the time to finish before the hearing. We're going to have to come back. So.
Did you go to that D O T meeting yesterday? No?
No.
Erica, did you go?
Did I?
Did you go to the D O T meeting?
No, I know. I ended up getting a chance to go. So I did a chance. What's that? Go far as you can, but I didn't. It's hard. I mean, do they always have the same time of the year?
Yes.
Kind of makes it tough for anybody here to go. I always went to them. I went to all of them.
The conferences?
I always went to the D O T meetings all the time, yeah.
I was going to sign up for one day yesterday, but there was really nothing on the agenda.
Tell what they did mark, too. You look at that. A damn fine.
Yeah.
I just started there. Now, you know, I have nothing to do.
How early in the morning?
Five-thirty.
Till what?
Two.
Till two? Yeah, I heard they were looking for a house.
Like this one, you're a quickie, though. They're trying to look around. They're starting to close now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see a lot more of that coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, they keep putting up more restaurants up there. It's not going to work out.
Yeah.
Didn't even have that convention, I don't think. Why they have it during busiest time of the year for a lot of them.
Can I bring something up?
Quick.
Quick. I brought this up before and I just want to mention again. I don't think we should use, as a county, should use employees, equipment, or anything at the, for Emmons County shop or anything like that.
Mm-hmm.
I think if we need it, we go get it or we lease it. We don't use employees, equipment, or anything like that. That's my personal opinion about it. Otherwise, sometimes they charge you and sometimes they don't. Then it's a question of, well, did he charge you any or what? Or you go to that board? I just like to stay away from that.
Yeah, no, I agree. It should always be spelled out, no matter where you're leasing it from. Or like you said, if we don't have the proper tool, we should be purchasing it if we need it that bad or when you said leasing it or not hiring it out to somebody that has it.
Yeah.
I agree.
Hello?
Hello? This is Dave Weiler with the Wall of Honor.
Okay. Dave, what was your last name there?
Weiler, W-E-I-L-E-R.
Okay. All right, Dave, we have, we have you, we have you on the phone in our meeting here and the floor is yours.
Okay, so, well, thank you very much for allowing me to say a few things. So, it's my understanding that there was, there was inquiry into having a wall of honor at the, at the courthouse there, is that, is that correct?
Yes, this is Chairman Aaron Ingram, I was actually listening to the Your Talk Show with Daryl Leece and Tammy Ibock and Dennis Beckron, I think you guys were doing something at ID Ford in Mandan?
Yes.
And they just mentioned that they, you know, Daryl specifically had mentioned that he thought it should be in every courthouse in the state, which I had agreed with and I thought, well, might as well at least extend the invitation, so as chairman, I just called into the radio show and I, you know, we know Tammy and Dennis, they grew up around here and we just invited them to the meeting and obviously you're here for them and I think, I think it's something we're...
Yeah, they're both in other parts of the state, apparently.
But yeah, I mean, I think we have a, I think we have a genuine interest in probably putting it in Ennis County's courthouse and we're just kinda curious what it would all entail and, you know, if there's any kind of cost associated with it and what, what those would all be, if we wanna make a decision.
Okay. Well, yeah, first of all, the, the cost is a one-time fee of three thousand dollars and that would include the TV, the bracket, the installation, the technology that we use, so there's nothing else other than that. And then, there is a annual maintenance fee of a thousand dollars, that takes, that takes effect after the first year. Now, what some of the other courthouses that we've gone into have done is they've, they've reached out and found a sponsor to pay for this. I know that, I think that Bismarck, American Legion paid for the one at the Verde County courthouse, Maripan Oil paid for the one at Morton County courthouse, and we've got another one up in Minot, we're working on for one courthouse there and, since, you know, since we've reached out, you know, I think we have about five or six other inquiries from, you know, from counties to do this, and, and we're also, we're also reaching out and hopefully, you know, getting a wall of honor in as many long-term care facilities as well, as far, you know, as well as banks and, you know, bars and restaurants and paternal and veterans organizations and things like that. Now, is there, is there anybody that's at that meeting, and I apologize, I, I couldn't make it down, I, I actually sell real estate here in Bismarck full-time and I, I do the wall of honor, I help promote it a little bit each week and I just, my day just didn't allow me to, to travel as much as I would like to have. But anyway, is there anybody that, that is sitting there that does not know what the wall of honor is or has never seen a wall of honor?
Well, I think you could probably just give us a brief rundown of what it all is and what it means to be...
Sure, sure, this, this started about two and a half years ago, there's a gentleman in Bismarck that wishes to remain anonymous, but it was his idea, he's a, he's a Vietnam veteran and his whole life he wanted to come up with a way to honor veterans and active military members and first responders and, and this is what he came up with. And again, he, he wishes to remain anonymous, but he, he started this and we are continuing his, his work, so we, we put up TVs, typically fifty-five inch TVs, they can be bigger, they can be smaller, but we put them in locations around the state and on that TV is, is a playlist that lasts about an hour long. And about every seven seconds, another honorary slide pops up with their picture, their name, branch they served, the years they served, or it's a first responder group, and so, and then, and then the playlist recycles through. And we use, the technology that we use, two things, when we give a new submission, we have a staff of two people that create slides and help create the playlist and they're able to send those out over the wifi, so the playlist is, is constantly being updated with new slides and the other thing about the technology is that every playlist is its own playlist. So the people that are being honored in Linton are not the ones that are being honored up in Mohol or Kenningham or Fargo, it's a, you know, the, the goal is to get as many local people on there as possible. And so that, you know, the TVs in the, in the certain areas of the state, towns, communities of the state are, are, are like local people, local, or unfortunate local first responder groups. One of the, one of the thoughts, I don't know, you know, if there's a, there's gotta be a draw on charities.
Dave, we're starting to have a hard time hearing you, I don't know if you're away from your phone or something.
Okay. Is this any better?
Yes, that's better.
Okay. Where, where did I, where did I start going back?
Well, you were just mentioning, you were starting to mention some of the charities around, maybe you were...
Okay, yeah, I just, I guess I'm trying to think of, I'm trying to think of, you know, maybe a, a charity that, that would be willing to sponsor a wall of honor in the, in the, in the courthouse. You know, when, when we get a sponsor, they get about four slides every hour, you know, let's fill the Maripan Oil in, in, in Mandan at the Morton County courthouse, that playlist will contain about four slides that, you know, just say, you know, this wall of honor sponsored by Maripan Oil. And, you know, I don't know if you guys, if somebody wants to reach out to any of the charities in, in Linton, I know the Linton Lions Club is a, is a fairly decent sized charity, I don't know any others out that way, but, you know, some of those that, that have some money from, because we are a five oh one C three organization, so, you know, they can donate money to us and in turn that would, you know, that would pay for, you know, pay for a wall of honor and they would get, again, about four slides that, you know, just says that the Linton Lions Club is, you know, the sponsor of this wall of honor. And I don't mean to single out the Linton Lions Club, I'm sure there are probably a couple other that may be willing to do it, I just, that, I, I, that's the only one that I know in, in that area.
But I don't, I don't think we have trouble finding sponsors, I really don't, I think, I think, I think if the county facilitated, you know, the access to, to the courthouse, I, I don't think we'd have a problem generating funds from the communities around us to do a wall of honor, I just, I don't, I don't see that being an issue really, so I think we put the word out there either in a newspaper ad or something like that, I, I think it would probably come in rather quickly, I think so.
Yeah. Okay. I guess, I don't, you know, I don't really have any other inform, oh, you know, from other places that we have a wall of honor, we are at bank lobbies, credit union lobbies, car dealerships, we're at airports, we're at high schools, we have walls of honor at Trinity High School, Dickinson, Bothamana High Schools, All Four, Bismarck High Schools, Public High Schools, we are going in to Glen Allen High School later this year, and so, you know, if anybody there thinks that, hey, that might be a good idea to, you know, to put one in the Linton High School, you know, feel free to help us out and if we can find a sponsor to put one in there too, we'd love to be, you know, in, in, we wanna be in, we wanna be in more high schools as well as courthouses and long-term care facilities, you know, I think it's important for our young kids to see, you know, pictures of our local heroes, you know, so we'd certainly like to see more in, in, in public high schools as well.
Anybody have any questions for Dave? I guess my opinion, just speaking for myself here, is I, I guess I would invite you guys down here to do an assessment of the courthouse and see where you think the best location is and stuff and, and I think we should keep moving forward with it to the point where we can start looking for sponsors if they'd be interested in...
Sure.
Unless anybody's gotten a disagreement and put it in the courthouse, I think it's a boost.
Yeah, yeah, typically, typically the, you know, where, where a couple of them are in courthouses are, they put them in, like, kinda where the busiest area's gonna be, you know, whether it's in a, in a hallway, somewhere where there's a lot of traffic, is, you know, is typically, you know, when they're in a restaurant or bar or something like that, they're in a place where people can sit and, you know, eat, eat dinner and, and, and watch it, look at it type of thing, but there's other, there's other places where, you know, they're, they're just in places where a lot of people can see them and, you know, you go to those places and you just see the, you see people standing and looking at it. The other, the other thing, and I'll just, I'll finish up with this 'cause I know we're, we're tight on time, people ask how do I get my mom or my dad or my sister, my brother up there, it's a simple process, you can do it online, www.thewallofhonor.org and there's a, there's a tab that says submit an honorary, you hit that tab, you scroll down a little ways and you enter all the information, name, years, branches of service, years they served, hometown, where they reside, a few other bits of information, and then you can simply upload a picture and hit submit and send it to our office in Bismarck and we have people that create the slides for that individual and then send it out, send it out over the internet to whatever location or region that that individual's gonna be featured in. So somebody from the Linton area will be featured primarily and if you, you know, take the city of Bismarck and draw a fifty mile circle around it, that's about what our region is and Linton is included in that, within that region, so they'll be on all the TVs, you know, within that region. And eventually, you know, as more and more people submit other honoraries, you know, it'll be down to just, you know, from Linton and surrounding areas maybe, because there's so many in Bismarck that the, that the playlist would need to be about two hours, but, but anyway, you know, so we encourage any of you that, you know, that knows someone, has a loved one that you'd like to honor, whether they're active, whether they're still living or whether they're, you know, veteran, if they're deceased, as, as long as you have served at some point and you have North Dakota roots, you'd like to see that honorary up there as well as, the, the other thing about first responder groups is that it works really well when, when a group can, you know, can like take a picture, if there's a Linton Fire Department, they should take a group picture and then send it to us and we will, we will have a slide, you know, in that area, surrounding area honoring the Linton Fire Department or whatever, ambulance service, sheriffs and deputies, you know, any other kind of first responder group, you know, you wanna honor those, those people as well.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, unless somebody has...
I have a question for Dave.
Go ahead.
Dave, this is Leonard Weiler, Commissioner, my question is if someone wants to submit a family member, does that family member need to give written permission in the event that they don't want to be honored?
So, so far, we have not run into any issues, there is, there is, when you, when you enter that stuff online, there is a check mark that you need to check, something that says, you know, you said you can share this, that they're giving consent to share this with, you know, our website and social media and, and on the wall of honor, something to that fact. I, I don't believe, we, we don't require someone to give their permission, we, we kinda read that up, if you have, you know, if you have someone that you wanna submit, then if you think they're gonna have a problem with it, you should probably get their permission beforehand, you know, but we have not had anybody ever call up and say, hey, I'm, I saw my picture up there, get it off, I don't wanna know.
Okay.
You know, we do know, we do know that veterans generally do not put themselves up there and that doesn't happen, you know, very often at all, it's usually, it's usually a family member or friend that, that wants to put them up there, so.
Well, I know I've seen the wall of honor person and I know I've seen it up in Bismarck, there's quite a few in Hazelton, Strasburg, I mean, I think it's a pretty neat deal, I think we got a pretty good location.
Yeah, you know, and, and part of the reason for that is, you know, there's a lot of people from that area that live here, so when they fill out the form or online and they say, you know, their hometown and they visited at Strasburg, but they were, and then there's also a, a residing in, you know, the town you reside in, and if they say Bismarck, then you're gonna be in both areas. You know, if you were born in Linton, North Dakota and you live in Bismarck, you're gonna be featured in both regions, you know, we have the state broken down into about eight different regions and you can kinda, you can kinda imagine, you know, where they are, so that's why you see a lot of people from the Linton, Strasburg areas that, you know, are on the wall of honor here, because a lot of them may have lived here at one time or have moved here or something like that, so.
Sure. Well, Dave, I think we're interested in pursuing it further, so I think if, you know, whatever is the next step in the process here, 'cause I think as far as the sponsors, I think once we got the word out, I don't think we'd have any trouble getting sponsors, so as far as that goes, I'd say coming down and just making sure the word...
I think what I can do, if you let me know, you, you guys, you guys know, I have not been in that courthouse and I know that Dennis and Tammy probably have, so they may have a pretty good idea or maybe you guys could even come up with a, with an idea of, yeah, it should go here, and then when you guys get a sponsor, in the meantime, we'll try to get somebody down there, if they're in the area, stop in and, and maybe even meet with one of you, just to kinda, you know, check out the location that you have chosen and we really, we don't, we don't ever tell any organizations or business where to put the wall of honor, we just say, you know, it should be in a place where you're gonna get the most people that are gonna see the stuff, you know, that's, that's really it.
Well, that sounds good, Dave, I think, well, I think we're all on board here, so Commissioner Home, you got a question?
I do have one question, as far as maintenance, what are you talking, you know, you got an annual fee of a thousand dollars, but what are you talking, what exactly do you gotta do for maintenance or what's involved there?
Well, so, the, the, the box that we use, the technology that we use, it's called the EZ at, the letter E, the letter E, EZ at time that we connect the TV, so at least that's important, and that's, that's the box that receives the information... And that's, that's the box that receives the information when a new slide is updated. But we are, again, we're, we are a staff of two people now and we're gonna have to increase it with all the, with all the new locations and everything. By the way, I don't know that I mentioned this, but we just celebrated our one hundred location spotting at ID Ford in Mandan. So it's pretty, pretty, pretty important to be at a hundred. We wanna be, I, I think we wanna be at about three hundred and that's probably saturation point. But nonetheless, so the, the maintenance fee, you know, we, we have a staff that we pay that creates slides and sends them out, creates the playlist. The technology that we use is very expensive. There's a monthly fee that we have to pay for every box that we have. Number one, we have to pay for the box, which is expensive. And number two, there's a monthly fee for every box that we have. So, you know, we just need to find a way to help reduce some of that cost. Because it does, it does get expensive. We rely on donations, sponsorships and.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, that all sounds good, Dave. I think, I think everybody's pretty well got their questions answered here, so. I guess we'll just.
Yeah, I think the other, the other, the other, the other point is, well, I guess I did talk about the, the expense of the, of that. You know, if something happens with the box, we have to, we have to send somebody out there. Our boxes, we have had a little bit of trouble with some of them. If there's a lightning storm and we don't have surge protector on there, sometimes that can fry in the box. So we have to run somebody out there, put a new box in. You know, so that, that's kinda what the, what the maintenance fee is, is there for. And, and the, and the agreement so far, when we have, you know, like Marathon Oil and Bismarck and that, when they sponsor a wall of honor in a, in a courthouse, they understand that they are the ones that are picking up the thousand dollar maintenance fee as well. So, you know, there wouldn't be any added cost to, you know, the citizens in that coming through any, you know, any, any way.
Okay, well, I think for the sake of time, Dave, I think, I think we're all in agreement that we probably wanna just keep pursuing it. So I think we'll just probably be in, in touch with your group and we'll keep moving forward. We'll probably, does it need, does it need one or two people here in the courthouse? Probably pick a good spot with commissioners or something and we'll just kinda stay in touch and as we progress, we'll let you know then.
Yeah, let me give you my cell number in case you guys have any additional questions or, you know, if you guys do find a sponsor, just feel free to give me a call or send an email. I don't, I've communicated with, sorry, I can't remember, but anyway, my cell number is seven oh one two two six sixty-three twenty-two. My name is Dave Wyler, W E I L E R.
Alright.
Alright.
Well, we'll be.
Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for coming, Dave.
Okay, have a nice day.
Thank you. Bye. Okay, well, we have about a half hour, so. We're done with the building permits, so, unless you wanna assess for an early lunch. The only thing I will bring up is in regards to that table building permit. On page thirty-three of our ordinance book, you know, it talks about recreationally zoned areas here. Basically, it says for uses not served by public water or public sewer, looks the minimum as forty-three thousand six hundred and fifty square feet, which is an acre. So. I mean, basically, the ordinance book says we're done going down anymore for one acre, so we should deny that. Well, I mean, you basically have to grant a variance if you're gonna do less than that, but that's what we talked before, so. That's just what's in the ordinance book, I did find that, so food for thought on that. Other than that, I don't think there's anything else.
Can't do any of these utility permits?
Uh, well, it probably is best to sky them.
Yeah, I think so.
So I'd say let's adjourn for an early lunch and I'll just, might as well just be back at one o'clock as long as we can be back early, so. Okay.
Alright.
Adjourned until one o'clock.